Being close to 6:30 on Tuesday, August 27, 2019, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
We certainly hope everybody had an enjoyable summer, and although, per the calendar, it's not officially over, in the world of education, I think summer is officially over. Just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio. First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve our meeting minutes from July 16, 2019.
So moved. A second?
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing non-lawary, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Unfortunately, Dr. Gogan had a personal emergency that came up at the last minute that she had to deal with, and with that being said, she has assured me, which I agree, that we are in good hands with her team. So I believe, Mrs. Perangeli, you will be presenting most of the Superintendent's Report this evening.
I will be.
Good evening.
I will be pretending, trying to do my best, filling in for Dr. Gogan in her shoes there. Tonight, I'm going to kick off the meeting with a personnel update. As you know, as you've said, summer has quickly come to a close, and there's been a lot of moving parts. The Superintendent's Office has been very busy, kind of a revolving door with staff coming in, entering and leaving. So Ms. Glennon, I think, will be a little relieved as we settle into the school year, and her office quiets down a little bit. So at the high school, we have Karen Cuslin, who joins us as interim assistant principal. We have Patrick Diggins, who is an adjustment counselor. Kimberly Morris, a sped teacher for Quest. Sarah St. John, new ELL teacher. Angela Duffy, she is a special education teacher. She was actually here last year as a long-term sub, I believe, and took a permanent role this year. We have some moves, as people have moved roles. We had a retirement in the cafeteria, so Ms. Linda Popolsky retired to fill her shoes, as Betty Haywisch is now going from cook to manager. We have Tiffany Jarmalovich, who is going to head cook. She will be starting on September 9. She currently is our BIC coordinator, so she is busy getting the schools up and running with that program. Once things settle in, she'll be jumping over to cook. We have Chris Houston, who moved to special education in a different area. We have Stephanie Ciaccini to BHS paraprofessional, and Maria Caratini to another BHS paraprofessional. At the middle school, we had Erin Pelletier, adjustment counselor. Amy Horner, grade six teacher. Michael Sweeney, long-term sub in guidance. Kylie Doobie, she is a long-term sub in grade eight ELLA. Susan Stitch, grade seven, eight math. Megan Tamalovich, long-term sub in the library. Kristin Lundstrom, paraprofessional. Nicole Cludia, paraprofessional. And we have some moves to Webster Middle School. Andrea Amato was moved to Webster Middle as an ELL teacher. Rhonda Frannick to Webster Middle School as a special education teacher. Amanda Young, a paraprofessional over at Webster Middle School. Julie O'Connor to grade seven, science. Russell Holden moved to grade seven, eight, science. George Newton was moved to five, six, special ed. And Donna Conover to grade six, special ed. And Samantha Boudette to grade eight, math. Over at Park Ave Elementary, we have some new staff there. We have Ms. Sarah Kent. She is the new admin assistant in the office, taking over from Ms. Rita Kelly, who retired after many years. We ran into her the other day, and she said it's bittersweet, but she's looking to volunteer already, so I wouldn't be surprised if you see her filling in at some point. We have Stephanie Herrera, who is adjustment counselor. Megan Strazella, grade three. Amanda Perry, paraprofessional. Christine McManus, speech and language pathologist. Barbara Smaltz, a long-term speech and language sub. Michael Scott is a new custodian over there. Michelle Boulay, grade two teacher. And Brandon Meads, grade three teacher. We've had some moves over to Park Ave. We've had Tracy Vangel, who moved to library media. Emily Lindberg to long-term sub, grade two. Megan Kuttu to ELL. Pam Paletta to Park Ave as a paraprofessional. Lorraine Gramatakrakis moved to grade four. Leslie Kwazneski to grade three. Jill Rekia to grade one. Jennifer Kelly to grade two. We still have a few positions that have not been filled. We've had some difficulty with the .6 foreign language position over here at the high school. We still need another long-term special education teacher at the high school, a paraprofessional position at the high school. Over at the middle school, we are looking to fill a special education teacher. And at Park Ave, we are looking for the interim dean of students and one more paraprofessional. So we're getting there. We're narrowing it down. We're on the home stretch. So hopefully, by the start of school, which is in a few days, we will be covered and hopefully be in good shape as we move forward. Any questions? All right. Second of all, we're going to talk a little bit about district goals to kick off the school year as an overview. You'll see later on, we'll be looking for approval, but Dr. Gogan has always presented this, the instructional strategies, and refers to it kind of like our strategic plan. It is our strategic plan. This is what we live and breathe by. We are looking as an overview for the district on implementing our new research-based curriculums with fidelity. We are looking at implementing intentional instructional strategies that increase student discourse, choice, and engagement. We are using valid data to improve teaching and learning, and we're focusing on creating more family-friendly school environments. As you know, we've, you know, worked really hard over the summer. We've gotten some good feedback by our family liaison, so we have taken all that information back, and we are moving forward into this year. And I think you'll see, as we go through the agenda, there is a real focus on engagement and social-emotional learning, and really supporting our instructional strategies for this year. We have some social-emotional learning, some additional programs that are coming. At the middle school in Bartlett, we have some presentations scheduled for October 2. It's ending the silence presentations for grades six through 12, and health class will be happening on November 18. We also signed a memorandum of understanding. I believe Dr. Gogan has mentioned to you guys before, the Attorney General and Sandy Hook Promise Foundation. That is prevention programs that are coming into our schools for grades six through 12. There's parts to the prevention program. It starts with Hello. It's an evidence-based program that trains middle school and high school students in grades six through 12 to recognize social isolation and reach out for help. The second is Say Something. It's a prevention program that trains middle school and high school students in grades six through 12 on how to look for warning signs and threats, especially on social media. The third is Signs of Suicide Prevention. It's a prevention program that trains middle and high school staff on how to recognize symptoms of depression and suicide. And then the fourth part of the program is having clubs in the school that is student-driven that works with these programs. So I think that awareness, and we've always talked about that, if you see something, say something, be proactive, and that's the world we live in nowadays, and we all need to be aware. And I think that just kind of flows into our opening day, you'll see a little bit down the road. There has been a lot going on over the summer, even though it was summer break for teachers, there was a lot of PD going on for teachers and leadership teams, to name a few. We started with our DLT safety care training that started on July 25 and 26. You'll notice you came in and you had some nice bikes down front. We had our summer summit, our ILT and our DLT Summer Summit on August 12 and 13. We kicked off the year having a little fun. Let's say, we've got a lot of new members and a lot of people that have come in and joined the team that were different this year, so we started kicking off the year with some collaboration and some teamwork, working together, learning your strengths and weaknesses. And the company came in that supported us. We had to solve puzzles and riddles, build things, work together as a team, and build these bikes. And at the end, we got to keep the bikes, which will be going over to our preschool. We will be reaching out to Boston Children's for some helmets to bring over there, and hopefully, our kids will enjoy those over at the elementary school. We had also our DLT Summit on August 14, where we talked about goals, expectations, procedures, and protocols. And then that was followed up on the 15th with some evaluation training. On August 22, we had some Power School Discipline login training. Our data specialist here in the district, Stacy, along with the superintendent and the leadership team, actually talked and looked at how are we recording discipline? How can we get good data? How can we track these in our system and use it to a fullest? So there was a lot of good conversation that came out of that meeting, and I think we're on way to having a good tracking system to make sure when we're reporting data, we're actually reporting factual data that's good and solid, has some backing to it. And then we had also, for the first time in this room, on August 23, this room has seen a lot of stuff going on in here this summer. We had our first-ever student activities training as a district, so we had the principals along with their secretaries come in, the auditors. Terenzio came in from Roselli &amp; Clark and provided a two-hour training for our new staff and our new principals, talking about the do's and don'ts of student activity. So it was really good to have that dialogue, and he was really happy. We also had members from the town come and join us. The town accountant, Jen Hisstaff, came over to join us, and it was just really positive, and the feedback was really good. They were all happy with the training. So and the auditors were happy to see that we were reaching out and doing that extra step. So it's always a good thing. And then we had safety care training for ABAs and paraprofessionals on August 19, 21, and 22. So as you can see, professional development has been ongoing throughout the summer, and we will continue that moving forward. Along with PD, there were summer programs going on in all our buildings. We have the Director of Student Support Services, Kathy Barris, here, and we have Ms. Janice Daniels, the Director of Curriculum and Title I, to talk about the summer programs. So I will turn it over to them to fill us in on their programs.
I always love this time of year, but it's kind of sad because it's the end. It's the end of summer, and it's really sad because I haven't gotten to the beach yet. We've been so busy. So we had a very traditional summer in all of our three buildings. At Park Ave, I partnered, Title I partners with 21st Century, so we had our pass one program, about 67 students. Everything was a success. At the middle school, we had fifth and sixth graders more in a traditional Title I for ELLA in math, and then the seventh and eighth graders had to come, there were selected students that needed to come in order to pass to the next grade. And we piloted Edgenuity for the second year, and it was very successful, and they arrived and they made it through the coursework. And at Bartlett, we had about 85 students take advantage of the summer school here at Bartlett. As a continuation of our pilot in partnership with North Village, I did a two-day program, and actually, it was only for four weeks, for second to fourth graders, grades two to four, and we had about seven to nine students that came on Tuesdays and Thursdays and really enjoyed themselves. And that's it on my summer program.
Hello. How's everyone?
Good.
Good. So as we always do in the summer, we offer an extended school year program for students on IEPs who qualify for services through that process. So in special education, for grades pre-K right on up through 12, 12-plus, we run programs in every building. We serviced about 80 students this year, and our focus is on assisting students to not regress in terms of the skills that they've acquired throughout the year, working on their IEP goals and objectives, and keeping them at a kind of a steady pace for the next school year. We also work on skills where students may have a difficult time recuperating skills after the start of the school year, so if it takes them a little bit longer to do that, that's why we provide those services to those students. And we identify them through data collection and seeing how they do after breaks from school, and how long it takes them to recuperate, or if they've lost skills. So we had a really successful program. Susan Ricard, who's one of our academic interventionists at Park Avenue, has once again served as our coordinator for the summer program. She, I'm going to give a big, big shout-out to her. She really does a great job coordinating it and, you know, matching staff where they're best suited. And I also want to give a shout-out to Maria Santir, who's my administrative assistant, who does a lot of work in terms of coordination of the, you know, the students, the transportation, and so forth and so on. So she and Sue are quite the good team. So they did a fabulous job. The feedback from Sue was that the program was very, very successful. We did a lot of work with kids who are transitioning, like school to school, especially at the middle school and high school, and they did some collaborative groups between the programs. So I thought that that was really wonderful and a great opportunity for the students at both levels. So I don't know if you have any questions, but that's the summary of the programs.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Over the summer, we also had our summer feeding program going on. I know Ms. Nylund will probably be here within the next or the meeting after to discuss her programs a little bit, but they went very well on an average. We were talking earlier today, she served approximately 200 meals a day, so between breakfast and lunch. So you figure five days a week, over five weeks, so it's about 5,000 meals that we served. It was also nice having the library. We've got some good feedback on that. We've had some people and families make a point to tell her that it was so nice, because typically, you know, the schools might not be available on a Friday, and that was another site that they could get to and walk to to have a nice meal prepared. So she'll be coming in future meetings to fill you in, but it was very active over the summer, so good programs. The next item on the agenda is social studies pilot. I will ask Ms. Daniels if she wouldn't mind speaking to that.
So briefly, in June 2018, the state adopted the new History and Social Science Curriculum Frameworks. That was last summer, and we made it through the year with teachers piecing their curriculum together. And I know many of them did some curriculum work and realigned what they needed to teach. So this year, we have been offered another free pilot from McGraw-Hill. They have resources that are completely aligned to the frameworks and all the standards. So some of the big changes have to do with civics education. There's more diverse historical content and new standards for media and financial literacy. So it's always good to work with teachers and figure out what's best for the resources. So I did have those conversations with Principal Zajac and the department head, Andrea Fitten, and there was, Lisa Wilmont was available this summer. We kind of pulled some of the teachers, and they all agreed, they looked at the materials, and they said, let's try it out. So that's our intent this year. It's really good because we are right on in our curriculum renewal cycle, so this is a kind of a review pilot year with the intent that if they really liked the materials and they work for us, it's in the budget for the next school year. So we're spot on.
Excellent. That's good, because over the years...
And it's free.
That's right.
Not that word.
Free is good. But it's really impressive that we are on track with our curriculum renewal, because over the years, that is something that I've seen kind of fall away. You know, when we're looking at our budgets, we're looking at cuts, that was kind of always the first thing to go. So the fact that we're keeping up with our curriculum, we're implementing new curriculum, says a lot to our path, where we're going, making sure we have up-to-date aligned curriculum in the classrooms with resources is key to success. So thank you for that. Item number six, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to skip over if you don't mind. We'll pass for the Superintendent on that. I'm sure she'd like to speak to that. And then number seven, other updates. We did have new teacher orientation here on the 21st. I believe you have a copy of our agenda in your packet. The day was filled with new teachers, having people in and out, teaching them all the new programs and stuff in the system, and really talking about our goals and where we want to go as a district. So I think overall, the day was a success, and new teachers seemed excited to be on board. We all had a turn talking to them throughout the day, so it was nice to get to meet them. On August 22 here at Bartlett, we welcomed the freshmen. There was a freshman barbecue that was held over here and put on by the high school, so we welcomed the freshmen and look forward to having them start school on Thursday. Yesterday was a big day for our district. It was opening day here in Webster, and what a treat we had yesterday morning. We were so fortunate to start the year off with a special speaker, Mr. Chad Hymus. He is an internationally recognized author and speaker. I'll read you a little bit about a bio that was read yesterday morning. The Wall Street Journal calls Chad Hymus "one of the ten most inspirational people in the world." Chad is one of the youngest ever to receive the Council of Peers Award of Excellence and to be inducted into the National Speaker Hall of Fame. In 2001, at the age of 27, Chad's life changed in an instant when a 2,000-pound bale of hay shattered his neck, leaving him a quadriplegic. But Chad's dreams were not paralyzed that day. Instead, he became an example of what is possible, and he certainly did remind us all of what is possible. His presentation was called "The Anticipatory Influencer: Turning Disruptive Challenges Into Advantages and Results of Our Youth of Tomorrow." It was, I think, an incredible hour and a half, 90 minutes, when he spoke. He was engaging. He talked about how he put his message into what we're doing here as a district. He gave us five principles that he really wanted us to not forget and walk away with. His first one, "As teachers, I need you to be teachable. For an example, allow more opportunities for kids to make progress, not just give them an F. Give them opportunities to succeed." He wants you to say a lot less of "I," "me," "mine." Say that a lot less. Use "you," "us," "ours," "we," and more when you're talking to the students and anybody in your life. It's not about "I," it's about "us." He said, "Love is demonstrated by your behavior, not your words." So it's all about your actions and how you present things. Be able to change habits in the way you think, and be willing to get awkward. Do something different. Things are changing, and we need to be willing to change, and do that on a daily basis. He offered to provide structure and discipline as a last resort, and don't wait until someone asks for help. Be proactive and give others hope, faith, and let them know you believe in them. And he said, "Service is an opportunity, not a setup." So he had a pretty powerful message. He, as I said, he's a quadriplegic, and he travels the world by himself. He flew in from, I think he said, Colorado. Flew in. He presented here in the morning. He was on a plane in the afternoon to go back to, what was it, Los Angeles, California, to do another presentation that night. And he does this, he travels all over by himself. He talked about his family, he talked about his kids, his support system. He will be back here in the district on October 21 to 23, I believe, to do, and he will be meeting with the kids during the day. He will also be doing a presentation at night in the district that is open for the community on the 21st from, I had it written down someplace. I have it here. I'll make sure I clarify that date for you, because I think it's important for anybody and everybody to come, because his message is that powerful. The staff, where, as you know, at the end of every PD day, we send out staff surveys and look for feedback, and all of this is on Mr. Hymus, and every role is excellent. The people were that taken by his message. So Chad was an amazing speaker. A couple of examples, he really delivered a powerful message that I hope to carry with me throughout the school year and beyond. I can't wait till he comes back in October. Chad reminded us of our ability to be in calling, to be an influencer. What a beautiful way to start the school year. I am pleased he is coming back. And those were the messages over and over and over. I feel ready to take on this school year, motivate to inspire my students. So these are just a few, but there's hundreds of them. I know they'll be presenting more surveys to you as we go through and they gather the professional development, but I think what a great way to start the school year. After that, it was all about PD and sessions going on. Today was another busy day for staff. Tomorrow, they'll be back for one more day. I believe they have some setup time tomorrow in the classrooms and professional development in the morning. Is that right? So we are gearing up and ready for Thursday. We're looking forward to the kids to come back, and I think we're all in the mind frame to do that. So I thank Ms. Daniels and Jill Chapdeline and Dr. Gogan, who put all of this together. There was a lot of work that went into these three days of PD, but I think it was a fantastic way to start the school year, so kudos to all of you guys. Thank you for that. And just a couple more, one more thing. Southern Worcester Educational Collaborative Update. Superintendent wanted to inform you that Alan Himmelberger, is that right, Himmelberger, has been hired as the interim executive director through June 30, 2020. Mr. Alan Himmelberger is a retired superintendent of Blackstone Millville Regional Schools. Have you had the pleasure of working with him? All right. So we're ready. He should be a good fit, I hear.
Yeah, I've known him for a long time. He was actually the business manager when I was a sped director in Oxford, and he became the superintendent there and then went to Blackstone Millville for a while. But a great guy. I think he'd be a great fit to steer the ship there in the interim, so.
Excellent. And that concludes the Superintendent's Report. If you don't have any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Let me just take a moment, first of all, to reiterate and thank everybody, not only from central office, but all the entire district leadership team. I think I made the mistake once about commenting about how quiet it is in the summer, and I got some really nasty looks by folks sitting on that side of the table. Also want to welcome all of the teachers and staff back to another school year. Unfortunately, all of us on the committee have day jobs that kind of get in the way, and none of us were unable to attend yesterday, but I did hear how amazing the keynote speaker was, and I'm actually thrilled that he's coming back, and not only the committee, but it sounds like the entire community made an opportunity to meet him.
Absolutely. I think it is, we will make sure we put it out there and make sure people are informed, because I think it's a, what a great message he sends. And I would be remiss, Ms. Chapdeline's not here, but I did have a talk with her before, and I did, she was excited about this training that was also going on. This is Ms. Deb Brady's. She is actually the author, and she has come in to do this training. We just think it's important that all the training that's going on revolves around turnaround work and social-emotional learning and curriculum and instruction. All of Bartlett received this book today, and tomorrow, the middle school receiving a copy of this book, and Deb Brady is personally doing the training. So she was excited to have some high-quality PD coming in here and kicking off our school year.
Thank you. So we are scheduled to have a joint meeting at 7 o'clock. Mr. Peranto, do you hear voices out there? Could you just check to see if they're ready?
I'm close.
I don't want you to start your presentation...
That's fine.
...and get interrupted since we're so close to...
It's perfect.
...7 o'clock. But the only final statement I was going to make was, again, welcoming all the students on Thursday. We, as a committee, hope everybody has a wonderful school year. Just a reminder to the hundreds and thousands in the public that watch this meeting, again, Thursday is the first day of school. Buses will be rolling, students will be walking, parents will be driving their children to school. So again, we do ask that everybody please be aware... please be aware of all the additional vehicles on the road, and we just ask that they please slow down and are patient. And when parents are driving through the school lines, especially at Park Ave and the middle school, just please be patient with all the staff as everybody works through the new kinks that I'm sure come up every school year.
Absolutely. I appreciate you mentioning that. We always say, get out there early for the first week or two. Buses are going to run late. They're gonna, you know, take their time to make sure they're not missing anybody. So give it time until we get a schedule down. And then kindergarten also starts the week after in September, so that also will affect the bus routes a little bit. So patience is always appreciated as we work through the first couple of weeks. It's also good to remind the public that kids are walking. So please be mindful. You know, these kids are on the road. Slow down the vehicles. Take that extra minute to take another look as we have kids back out on the streets walking to school every day.
And I know, I'm assuming it was the chief, somebody from the police department posted on their Facebook page this morning, a similar message, so.
Perfect.
Well, with it being close to 7 o'clock, we've been inundated with some really important people. So I would invite the members of the Board of Selectmen to join us right here at the table in front of you.
J.
How's everybody doing this evening? Mr. Borke and Chairman Becker, if you could do me a favor and turn those microphones on before I get yelled at. Chairman Becker, are you waiting for Mr. Jolder?
Jolder is not able to come today.
Okay. So I believe, we obviously have already established our meeting, so I believe your meeting has to be called to order.
Have you, um, call me? Favor?
Well, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. And again, Mr. Becker, please, if you want to chair this, that's entirely up to you.
All yours, Mr. Hurd.
So the item on both agendas is to appoint a member to fill the school committee vacancy, as I believe everybody is aware. A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Schenover submitted his resignation regarding his position on the school committee. I've said it at our last meeting, and let me just once again say publicly to thank Mr. Schenover for his years of service, not only to the community as an elected official, but also especially to the kids of Webster. And per the town charter, there was a posting through Mr. Willitson's office that anybody who is interested in filling the open school committee vacancy should submit a letter of interest. And also, per the town charter, both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen meet and vote collectively as to who we feel might be the best individual to fill that seat. And that person, if they're appointed this evening, would then fill that seat until the upcoming election in May. And I believe Mr. Schenover's seat will then have one year left on his term. So in the May election, it'll actually be three school committee seats on the ballot. Two would be the traditional three years, and one would be the one year remaining on Mr. Schenover's term. So we had a tremendous number of applicant, being a little facetious. We actually received one, they say in life, it only takes one. As long as that one is really, really good, and in this case, in my opinion, it is a very, very good person who is stepping forward once again to serve his town, and that individual is Mr. Michael McCarran. I believe you shared his letter as we were. So unless the members of the board object, I would open it up to Mr. McCarran if he would like to step forward. And not that you need to introduce yourself, but make any comments regarding your desire to join our committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the first thing I want to say, too, is to echo what you had said about Mr. Schenover. So it was my pleasure to serve with him. You know, he's one of the people that we kind of recruited, as we often do. Just an active parent, great guy, great parent, great role model, just a great, solid person. And, you know, his time on the committee was, you know, was very good. It was, it was great for the committee, great for the town. So we wish him well, him and his family well. So, yeah, I've applied. I have a little experience to offer in this position. As I said in my letter, you know, when Brian resigned and we spoke, I thought it was a good idea to, to think about it, to apply. And I think what I, you know, I obviously bring some experience. I think I also hopefully bring a stability to the committee, just knowing the policies and not to be a disruptive kind of force at all. And just, you know, I'm always willing to serve and do my part, you know, to fill the, fill the time until, until the May election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarran. Are there any questions or comments from either members of the committee or the board?
Yeah, I think the Board of Selectmen would certainly like to thank Mr. Schenover as well. It's not easy to be elected and run for a position. And I personally think you couldn't have found a better candidate to step in. So I'm thrilled that we have the right person, Mr. McCarran, stepping up again. Thank him for
Any other questions or comments? Hearing Nana, what is the desire of the committee and board?
I'll make a motion to appoint McCarran as filling the vacancy by Mr. Schenover for this one-year term.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Once again, Mr. McCarran, thank you very much for stepping forward on behalf of the town and the kids in our town. Since I think it's a joint vote, perhaps it may be easiest if we just, you want to pull your board?
We can do a roll call vote.
Okay.
If we, up in Contos?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Mrs. Naparata?
Yes.
Mrs. Siddiqui?
Yes.
Mrs. Blythe?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And again, thank you very much, Mr. McCarran.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just as always, try to do the right thing.
And should we also thank Mrs. McCarran at the same time?
You should.
Probably should have thanked her first, correct?
Yes.
Before you all leave, I completely decide, I was reading some of the new protocols you folks put in place as a board, and I'm guessing perhaps under Mr. Willitson's assistance. And I just want to, as a taxpayer and a citizen, thank you for what was announced today. As some of your new policies and procedures and transparency, I was extremely impressed with what you put together. So thank you.
Thank Doug for putting it out and following up with the, you know, with all the committees, especially with regards to the minutes.
We discussed it a while ago. You just have to take the compliment. Well, thank you for joining us tonight.
So we will adjourn right now to head back to the town hall. We'll reconvene at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. We'll just amend that and reconvene at 7:30 at town hall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. McCarran, you know this better than I, but obviously
Sorry.
Yeah, you have to get sworn in by the town clerk, so he will be joining us at our next meeting. So continuing on with our agenda, we will continue under the superintendent's report, the business manager report. Once again, good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the 100-year celebration, Webster and Southbridge Thanksgiving football game. We have the athletic director, Mr. Tony Pronto, here to talk about that. So come on down, Tony.
While he's stepping forward, I said to him privately the other night, but I just want to publicly thank you and your players for the wonderful representation down at the beach during the Boston 25 zip trip. You just turned it off, actually, Mr. Pronto.
Mic back on? There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it was a pleasure being down the beach with the zip trip, being an avid watcher of that news station with the meteorologists and whatnot. It's a special occasion, and I thought it was great that the kids took their time to go down there, and I thought they did a great job. It's always good to get recognition in a positive way.
I think several of the cheerleaders and several other students were there as well.
They were.
Okay.
Okay, getting into the, just jump right into the 100-year celebration. Bartlett High School Football Program is celebrating 100 years of football this year, starting in 1920 to 2019. It'll be the 100th Bartlett-Southbridge Thanksgiving Day matchup. The BHS Football Gridiron is in partnership with Southbridge Booster Club Committee in planning a celebratory milestone to the following activities. We're going to be doing a sale of the 1950 replica jersey, a BHS and Southbridge version, to be sold independently by each school to fans and alumni. All these proceeds are going through the booster clubs. They're not going through the school. The Bartlett football team will wear replica jerseys at all home games to honor this incredible milestone. A joint celebratory banquet, like I said, will be held on November 23rd. Tickets, we're in the process of selling tickets and establishing our venue right now. We have two different places that we're waiting on pricing right now. So we're going to, hopefully, we can solidify that. We have another meeting tomorrow night. BHS and South High School, one-hour-year apparel specifics will be sold at each school's respective home games. The proceeds will be distributed based, proportionally based upon each school's sales. So Southbridge will be doing their own sales. We'll be doing our own sales, and then we'll divvy up the money that way. So independently, they'll be doing that. Something that's familiar with a little bit of a design, what it's going to do, the 1950, it's a little bit throwback jersey. But we're also going to be doing a commemorative patch that Avro Shaq, Dave Labs will be, he's finishing up the touches on that. Obviously, he's a very busy individual right now throughout the whole town. He's taking some time out to do our 100th patch for us right now also. But if the committee has any questions, feel free to ask right now. We are working on, actually Doug just left, too, but we are working on the upper athletic field for the billboard up there, and we're trying to do something in designing up there with, Dave Labs, again, will be painting that billboard for us. Me and Mr. Perangeli have been speaking about how we're going to do it in a tasteful manner, especially with our mascot. So we're trying to find out, we'll make sure that we cover our avenues with that.
Any questions or comments from hearing Nun? Thank you very much, you know, to you and the boosters for all the work you're doing in trying to celebrate a pretty significant anniversary.
You very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pronto.
We're still behind, but we're gaining ground. How's that?
You should get into politics.
Thank you.
Want me to stick around for you?
Yes, maybe we can jump to that.
That would be easy, yeah.
Is that okay? After. Second item on my agenda is the Safer Schools and Communities Grant. I came to you back in April telling you that I applied for a grant to install additional cameras in the middle school, upgrade the server over there, and to install some cameras in Park Ave. I am pleased to inform you that we did get notification. We did receive the grant, in the amount of $60,184.82. The work needs to be done, this is a quick turnaround. The work needs to be done and fully installed and paid by the end of December. So I am working with the company. They've come out. We've walked through with the police a couple of times to find out what priority areas there are. It's not enough money to give us a full set of cameras over at the middle school and at Park Ave, but it's at least something to give us a good foundation. The middle school is very outdated. Their server's outdated. The cameras are old, so we'll be able to update that server. So the police and an event emergency will have access to those cameras. And it'll give us an opportunity to put a couple of, a few indoor cameras at Park Ave, where we have no indoor cameras right now. So it's a good starting point for us to be able to add to, so that way, as we move forward through the next years, we can start to plan accordingly and add cameras in the areas. So happy about that. And then the third item on the agenda is the FY19 budget closeout. I told you in July that I would be wrapping up the budget by the next meeting, and I did that by the skin of my teeth last week. You've gone through the closeout, and I've highlighted some areas in the budget. Overall, we ended up very well. As you know, we had put a spending freeze on in the middle of December because we were seeing some increasing tuition, some increasing out-of-district cost in special education. We wanted to be a little proactive on that and try and not only cover the cost, but hopefully assist in not fully spending our circuit breaker funds as we rely on that. You know, our goal with circuit breaker with any district, they try and carry over a year's balance at a time, and we haven't been able to do that in a few years. Unfortunately, we're still not able to do that, but at least we were able to recoup some of those funds. I have highlighted in the budget for you areas, and I've tried to make comments to the right for your information. If, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I don't plan on going through this line by line, but if there are areas, I mean, the big areas are, we had some significant savings in utilities. So we did reduce the budget areas in the, especially at the high school this year. We've rarely seen our net metering credits come on board. That's made a huge difference. So, you know, we did cut it significantly, about $40,000 this year over at Bartlett alone. So there is a reduction. Our rates did change this year coming up. We had to go back out and get new rates, so there was a little increase, but I think we're still be in good shape coming up this year. If you do look at special education, those are the numbers that start with 037624. I don't have page numbers, I'm sorry, but it's towards the end, maybe like three from the end. You will see that our tuitions, we did offset the tuitions with $551,000 in circuit breaker. We had originally budgeted 564, I think, in circuit breaker funds. So we were right where we said we were going to be without going over, which is good. We were able to absorb in the LEA budget about 261 additional funds over the top in tuitions. So we had budgeted 2.46 in tuitions coming into FY19. We ended up spending 2.693, so almost 2.7 in tuitions. So the LEA budget was able to pay 2.14 in tuitions. So we picked up a big increase and was able to level off our circuit breaker, which was good. That was our goal. I'm hopeful that this year, moving into this year, we've increased, so we budgeted 2.5 million, and that's where we've been leveling out at. We haven't seen any significant changes going through the school year, comings and going. So hopefully, we will be in good shape. But by doing that, we will able to save some circuit breaker funds, so that'll help us this year coming if we need to. We were able to, you know, carry over $477,000 into FY20 for circuit breaker. So I'm happy about that. I think we're in good shape, and hopefully, we will not be talking any spending freezes this year. So that's a good thing. You'll, I'll also point out in the budget, on the second to last page, you will see an increase in transportation. There was a line item that didn't have any original appropriation. That was when I came to you, because we did see a significant deficit in transportation. So we had journaled some transportation invoices into our budget, and we also recouped $150,000 of that cost for the town that we took into our budget. So I mean, overall, if you take over the additional 260 and the 150, there was some significant savings that we recouped through the budget process that we were able to apply to offset some of those expenditures. I am certainly happy to answer any question.
Those last two numbers, you just two?
It was 2.6, I mean, $260,000 in special ed, and then 150. And 260 just in tuitions.
Right.
And then there was an extra $70,000 that we offset with some contracted services. And then it was $150,000 in transportation that the school department paid for to assist with the town. with the town. So, I mean, overall, I think we ended up in, we were fortunate that we put the, if we didn't put the spending freeze on, we would have been in a different boat. Nobody wants to do that, I don't want to do it again, and you know, that's a last resort. We just couldn't keep up with what was going on with the tuitions last year and the changes, so hopefully this year is a little bit more stable. And, you know, it's something that we always watch closely, we talk frequently when things are changing, so, so far, so far we're level, which is a good thing. Any questions for me in regards to the FY19 budget?
Again, I'll state the obvious because I'm good at it, just again, thank you to you and your team and all the administrators for, you know, managing what is not an easy budget to begin with, but especially in essence, you know, our spending was at a level so that we were able to offset some pretty significant unexpected costs, which is a very strong positive.
Yep, and even though we did have a spending freeze in place, we still, we still bought stuff, we still ordered stuff. Whenever a principal came to us with a need or a request, I don't, I don't think, you know, it was just making them aware of, you know, is this a real need, is this something that we need to do, is it going to improve instruction, something we need for the classroom? So, we didn't say, we didn't say no to anything, we didn't turn anything down, but I'm pleased overall at how the budget turned out. Thank you. And if there are no further questions, actually, I did want to inform the committee of something, I just got notice of that today. I received notification from the MSBA that our building committee was approved, so I will start to hold building committee meetings for Bartlett, so we can start discussing how we're going to move that forward through the town. And the second item that I sat in on this week was, we had a conference call with foster care. As you know, part of the reason why we paid $150,000 was the new regs on foster care They are looking to, they have worked out a way through Title 4E, which is a federal through the Social Security Act, of reimbursing districts some of the money that was, that is being spent on foster care transportation. They said at a minimum, the district will get reimbursed 20% at a max, it's 25%. We can go back to April 1st of FY19, but in order to submit any reimbursements in, I have to go to town meeting and get approval to bill through Title 4. So, this just happened this week, I'll be talking with the town and working out the logistics, and I'll bring more information back to you, but, you know, hopefully we can get that passed through the town and then moving forward, at least try and recoup a little bit of that cost. You know, anything helps, anything helps.
Are you going to be looking to do then in the October special town meeting?
Yes, I am.
Because I think they're opening up the warranty.
Yes, so I have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Willardson on Thursday to talk about a couple things, and that, that is one of them. Yep, and that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, thank you very much. Next item under the, on the agenda is under old business, disbanding of Park Avenue Elementary Building Committee, talking about one brand-new committee. Again, I think most of the members are aware that the Park Avenue School Building Committee was in existence for 10 years plus. I just want to publicly thank the members of the school building committee, Chairman Dan Ricky, Vice Chairman Sean Collins for many years, Tara Gialino, Beth Esposito, the representative from the school committee, I believe started off, I'm sorry, from the Board of Selectmen, started off as Deb Keefe, and then I think it was Jeff Duggan.
Yep.
Andrew Jolda has been the representative for many, many years, going way back, all the administrators that helped us along, certainly Dr. Ciardi, Mr. Benincasa, Dr. Malkis, I know I'm going to forget some, so please forgive me, Mrs. Wallace, if you'll let me finish, Mr. Avalas for many, many years, and certainly Mrs. Perangeli over the years, and, oh, I forgot Mr. McCarron, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
So, again, thank you to everyone, it's funny, I think I said this at our meeting, Dr. Ciardi asked me if I would be willing to be on it, and he said, yeah, it'd only be a couple of years. That was about 10 years ago. So, it's very rare, I believe that any construction, commercial construction project, especially a public construction project, not only finishes on time, but under budget. We had about a $360,000 final, or am I under guessing, was it close to 500,000?
Yes.
So, we came under budget by about 500,000 dollars, in addition to the original bids coming out 10% less because of the construction market. So, I want to again publicly thank everybody who served over the years, who volunteered to get the vote out, and most importantly, I do want to thank the citizens of Webster who approved the project many, many years ago, and now we, the students and the staff benefit from a beautiful building that was desperately needed. Since the school building committee is actually a subcommittee of the school committee, they, at our last school building committee, we had recommended, took a vote to recommend that the school building committee be disbanded, so unless the members have any questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to disband the Park Avenue School Building Committee.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, so I believe Mr. Pronto is here for item E, correct?
Correct.
So, unless the members object, I am going to jump in new business to item E, which is approval of coaching handbook. So, Mrs. Perangeli, and/or Mr. Pronto?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Pronto. It is my understanding that the handbook doesn't necessarily have to be approved, but we thought it was a good idea that under MIA regulations, we do need to have a coach's handbook. As we present all our other handbooks to the school committee, we felt it was a good idea for you to review and take a look at this handbook also.
Thank you, that is correct. Ms. Perangeli said, we put a coach's handbook out, if you haven't seen it, it's very extensive, a lot of time, a lot of work, making sure we cover ourselves through state regulations. So, if the committee has any questions, right from our mission statement, which we devised all the way to anything you can think of for our coaches, it's kind of like their survival guide, so to speak. Every season, as the athletic director, we pass these coaches' handbooks out, and I have a meeting with them specifically, and fortunate enough to have some veteran coaches, so the meeting doesn't last so long, because if I went through the whole handbook, we'd be there for hours, but I do sit down the rookie coaches, bring them in prior to, give them the handbook, let them peruse through it, and then we sit down extensively and go over it, so that way, if they have any questions with me before we meet as a group, as a whole each season, so we do this three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. And we have to cover, like I said, you can look at all the things in there, from concussions is the biggest thing right now, obviously we have the big now, the heat index now on, which is not included in there, because I didn't include inside the coach's handbook only because we have a big meeting first of September with a lot of athletic departments and throughout the whole state that is going to be targeting the MIA with this heat index right now, because there's, I'll just leave it as that's, they, they haven't covered themselves through the state right now, they just opened the gun a little bit right now and panicking, and they're following Florida and Texas guidelines more than obviously demographic of Massachusetts that, that heat index is very rarely affected, and they're making schools go out and spend thousands of dollars, especially if they're different districts that cover themselves. And there's no way of being at every location, so being at a golf course on the sixth hole might be different on the first hole, so to speak, and being at the beach might be a little bit different for our cross-country, or being on the field here in the soccer field. And as an athletic director, I cannot be at seven different locations if we have events going on and then monitoring this on a daily basis, so just a quick synopsis of that heat index, I'm sure that you've seen it throughout the state right now, so I just wanted to give you a heads up with that, and we were meeting on September 5th in Hudson discussing that in depth.
Were the ADs aware that they were considering that policy?
They put it out, there was a consideration in January of this past year, and then on August 12th, they put it that it was passed, and everybody was up in arms because we never had a meeting, we have a state meeting that takes place in April, which we could have discussed it throughout the whole state on Westboro, and they did not bring it up.
Any questions or comments from the members regarding the, so you don't believe we need to approve it?
You can, as a formality, if you'd like to, I think, never hurts.
What are the, what is the desire of the committee?
Just keep in mind, this handbook may change as state regulations set forth, so that, like I said, the code concussion one changes sometimes yearly, but we, we updated that thing in March 14th of 2019 to follow the regulations we needed to through state.
Because if we approve it, then, then we have to approve every change.
It's not, it's not required by MIA to have school committee approval, I believe.
No, no, it isn't.
Unless the members object, again, thank you to you and your team, or may just be you, that put it all together.
One man band.
And good luck with the fall sports starting soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pronto.
Next item on the agenda, under new business, is approval of job description cafeteria manager. We have been presented with a newly updated job description for the cafeteria manager. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, next item on the agenda is approval of job description breakfast in the classroom coordinator. Again, we were provided an updated job description for the breakfast in the classroom coordinator. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, next item on the agenda is approval of the employee handbook. Again, we have been provided with a draft copy of the employee handbook with very minor changes that were presented in the cover page. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the employee handbook.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Next item on the agenda is approval of the substitute handbook. Again, we have been presented with an updated version of the substitute handbook with four minor changes. Important to update the Bartlett principal's name, change the central office, increase the power in ABA daily rate, and increase the hourly rate of cafeteria administrative assistance. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the substitute handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, next item on the agenda is approval of memorandum of agreement Webster Educators Association, Mrs. Perangeli.
Yes, we have memorandum of agreement from the, okay, I'm just finding it, I'm sorry, from the WEA for an additional grade eight content leader for the Webster Middle School for the 2019-20 school year in the amount of $2,092. And then, what was in the contract in the past somehow got, it was just an era of elimination during the new contract, it's actually ESL coordinator, that was always existent in the contract, and for some reason it was eliminated from this past one, not intentionally, it just got dropped. So, there is funding for that in the amount of $2,149.56 for the 2020 school year. I just want to point out that in the contract, it says ESL coordinator, but that is outdated language. It is typically, the position now is actually going, it's ELL, because you'll notice in the print under it, it's ELL, and they're actually moving the language, I think, down the road to EL, they're calling them Ls, so, but I just think the memorandum should reflect at least ELL, which is the appropriate term currently that we have. So, English Language Learner is not English Second Language, so I will make, I don't know if we can make a note, note on that, I'm sure the union would not have a problem with that, we can, I don't know if it, make a motion pending unions agreement, that would be my recommendation.
Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The addition, and you may have said this, so, sorry if you did, addition of grade eight content leader stipend, was that just omitted, or are there two grade eight content leaders?
There are not two grade eight, so the way he had his budget designed, I believe he, he's looking to have all grade levels represented in addition to some content areas. So, the content, math, science, and English, but they also are doing things on a grade level across, so it's not, it's not two grade eights, it was an additional position that he didn't have this year, he said the grade wasn't represented. Did I explain that appropriately? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, what is the desire of the?
We, I'd like to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented.
May I suggest?
With the proposed edits, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Assuming accepted by?
WEA.
Second?
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
We're sleepy today.
Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Abstain. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of donation from Webster-Dudley Food Share. Ms. Nyland received a check in the amount of $7,117.97 from the Webster-Dudley Food Share for a new salad bar unit at Bartlett High School. The old unit did not pass board a health inspection in June, and we are purchasing a new table. First of all, let us thank, obviously, the folks from the Webster-Dudley Food Share for their tremendous generosity. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation of $7,117.97.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, next item on the agenda is approval of surplus items, Park Avenue Elementary Go Math Books slash Materials. Mrs. Parmley is requesting that we approve the declaration of Go Math Books and Materials as surplus. A list of those items have been provided to us. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to move to declare the attached list of items as obsolete and to direct the business manager to auction off, donate, or otherwise recycle slash dispose of these materials in conjunction with provisions of Mass General Law 30B.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, next item on the agenda is approval of the 2019-2020 Strategic Plan Instructional Strategies. My notes say skip, is that not correct?
That's fine, we can skip, I do have it here, this is a document I think you're all familiar with, Dr. Goguen has talked about this quite a bit. These are our focus areas and our goals, and really, this is our strategic plan. It's updated annually, we meet as a leadership team, and it really focuses on where our goals are going for the year, so if the school committee wishes, we can vote on this. I know we've had multiple meetings and it's obvious, it's been talked about, unless you have any questions that you see something of area concern that you would like to speak with Dr. Goguen. that you would like to speak with Dr. Gogan. I know, once it's approved, we have plans to plaster this throughout the schools and walls and teachers' rooms, and hand it out to staff to make sure that this is always on our mind when we walk through our buildings and in our classrooms as to what instructional goals are.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. What is the desire of the committee?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Strategic Plan as presented.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Again, once again, thank you to the efforts of the entire district leadership team in putting this... Hearing no further discussion. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is the Approval of Fundraising Organization, Gridiron Club. Again, per school committee policy, we do not approve actual fundraising events. Those are done by the building principals and the superintendent. But we do approve the organizations that register with the district to raise money on behalf of the district and our students. And so, I would, again, like to thank the Gridiron Club for their years and years and years of service and efforts and hard work in supporting the football program primarily. Are there any questions or comments about this agenda item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Gridiron Club as a fundraising organization.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Fundraising Organization, the Cheer Boosters. Once again, Cheer Boosters work extremely hard in raising money to support our wonderful cheering program. Are there any questions or comments about the approval of the fundraising organization Cheer Boosters? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Cheer Booster fundraising organization.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. And next item on the agenda is Approval of Fundraising Organization - Music Boosters. I will repeat myself for the third time. This is an amazing organization that raises a tremendous amount of money for our music program, obviously, the band, the chorus, and especially the show choir. And without their efforts, Show Choir may not exist as we know it. So, are there any questions or concerns regarding the approval of the Music Boosters as a fundraising organization? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve as such.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Increase of Park Avenue ABA from a .4 FTE to a 1.0 FTE. We have a memo from Mrs. Barris requesting that this increase occur. It is needed to support students who have moved from the half-day preschool program to the full-day kindergarten program. And after discussing this, the funding will be through the local budget by moving a portion of salary for a paraprofessional position into the SPECT grant and freeing up local funds for the ABA position. Anything else, Mrs. Barris?
So, as you... I mean, every year, it's... We do our very best to predict, you know, what our student needs are going to be. And we have students that move out during the summer months, and some of our high-needs students did move out. And, but we also welcomed a number of families into the district who also have high-needs students. So, all things considered, I think that, you know, we were fortunate that, you know, this is really all we ended up requiring. So, the last group of students that were not supported when everything was, you know, divided up was an inclusion group. So, we need... There's one person who is a point for. So, the position is something that we'd like to make a full-time position to support those kindergarten students. So...
Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the increase of the Park Ave Elementary ABA from .4 FTE to 1.0 FTE.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Abstain. And again, before I get to the last item, good luck to all the students and staff and everybody, bus drivers and crossing guards and administrators as the first day of school is on Thursday morning. Next item on the agenda is the Review Transfer Signing of Bills, Payroll, and Vouchers. We do have one request for a transfer from the middle school. So, I will entertain a motion to transfer $4,579 from the middle school student activity savings account to the middle school student activity checking account.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to clarify. Just as informational, I did confirm the date of October 21st for Mr. Chad Hymus that is coming back to our district, and he is presenting here at the high school from 6:00 to 7:30. It is open to all community members. So, October 21st, 6:00 to 7:30 here at the high school, and it's open to all community members. And if you can make it, come on down. He really was something... Really put on something special.
Thank you very much. And we'll make sure that gets out in social media land.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Siddiqui.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much, everyone.